So we will call to order the city council meeting for the city of Dunsmere on July 2nd to order at 6:01 PM. Yeah, give me one second there. Here my screen here. And so we'll get the meeting started. Just a couple rules really quick is all mics are muted and will only be unmuted by myself during public comment windows. And so public comment windows are for general public comment, which will be item number four. And then old business, actually today, we have a public hearing at item number nine, and then for new business at 11. So just to let you know, members of the public may give public input through the chat function or raise their hand. So you get to the raise hand option in the participants menu, and there should be some dots at the bottom of the participants menu where you can raise your hand. And I will unmute you for your three minutes. If we have any technical difficulties, we're nice about that time. So please be patient while we work through the programming and sometimes weak internet connections. To improve your connection, please try to turn off your video if possible. That does sometimes improve the connection for yourself. So again, if at any point we lose connection, we will wait 15 minutes and get the meeting back up and running. If we cannot get the connection back in 15 minutes, we'll consider the meeting adjourned. So just a couple of housekeeping items there. So I'm going to move us into the flag salute. Councilmember Deutsch, would you like to lead us in the flag salute?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll move into roll call. Wendy?
Councilmember Art?
Here.
Councilmember Brian?
Oops, sorry, he is muted. Let me unmute him.
Councilmember Brian?
Present.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Present.
Councilmember Keisler?
Here.
And Mayor Lukasi?
Present. So we'll now move on to item number three, which is special presentations, which we have none that are here tonight. And we will now move right into general public comment. So this is time for members of the public to address an issue that is not on the agenda or to comment on our consent agenda items. Today, we've only got one, which is our check register, which you see here on the screen. So each speaker will be given three minutes to make their statement or may present their questions in the chat function. If you can't find the raise hand function in the participant's tab, please also let me know via the chat function that you'd like to make a general public comment. So are there any general public comments tonight? Okay. I'm going to start with Stephen Bryan. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Stephen Bryan, the director with the Dunsmere Community Resource Center, and I wanted to make the community aware that we have funding, that we're working with OES and United Way to bring disaster preparedness training to the community. And we're going to start doing these trainings in the July going into August. Our goal is to get several hundred of the South County community members trained. We're looking to train the most vulnerable members of our community and individuals that work with those most vulnerable. So if there's a disaster in the community, we're going to be working with DPAC, hopefully Neighborhood Watch, we're working with the schools, Rotary, and other community members that will help those most vulnerable in the community if there is a disaster to help them evacuate and know exactly what it is they need to do to get safely out of the community in a timely manner. At these trainings that we're providing, we'll be issuing go bags to them along with a lot of tools for their belts so they know exactly, they're ready to go in case there is a disaster in the community. You could call the resource center at 235-4400 to get on the list for trainings. We're going to do them in small groups. Those that are available to do trainings through via Zoom, we'll do them that way. Those that aren't available to do Zoom, we'll do them in small groups. And we're working with Mike Rodriguez and using the community center. I've already spoken with Susan Keeler in the Dunsmere Elementary School to use their gymnasium. But like I said, we want to keep it to small groups of 10, or maybe the most is 15, but we're going to practice social distancing and all the other COVID safety regulations that go along with that to do these trainings. So I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention and to let the city council know that we are working on that, starting second.
All right. Thank you. That's wonderful. All right. I did see Devin Warner's hand up, and let me go find her. Devin, did you want to make a general public comment on an item not on the agenda?
Yes, I don't think it's on the agenda. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, yes.
I don't think this is on the agenda. I just wanted to talk a little bit about public health safety. I noticed that the sheriff issued a letter not too long ago imploring people to follow guidelines, but he didn't seem to have it in his heart to actually say the words, "Wear a mask in public." And I'm asking you, as the city council, to please do that, not just to the public in Dunsmere, whether a resident or tourist. But I'd really, I'd really like you to just talk to every business owner in town, or send a notice, or I don't know what authority you have, but I feel like businesses here are not enforcing mask wearing indoors. And tourists are coming here from Sacramento and San Francisco and LA and other places where they're wearing masks, and they come here and find that they can get away with not wearing a mask in Dunsmere, and they're all taking them off. And as you know, we are having a surge. So I think it's super important. I understand that there's some kind of signage coming in from some government agency that we can put up, but I'm actually working on my own, and I'm going to put them up. And I ask you not to take them down, and I ask you to please do something about this problem. We have a lot of vulnerable people in this town. It's not just, you know, me, the cancer patient. It's, you know, we have a lot of people over 65, you know. The guy who runs our hardware store owner is over 70. And if the nation knew about him, he'd be a national treasure, but I guess he's a town treasure because we know him. So I'm asking you to please do whatever you can, whether you have the authority to or not. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And then I do have a comment here from Paris Petrick that she had wanted me to read during the general public comment, so I'm going to take this time because I don't see anyone. Just for those who joined us, if you would like to make a comment on an item not on the agenda, or in reference to our consent agenda, which the only item there is our check register, you can let me know by raising your hand in the participants panel or letting me know via the chat that you'd like to make a comment at this time. So I'm going to read Paris Petrick's at this time, and hers is that the street cleaner is doing a wonderful job, but it appears that they're cleaning exceptionally early in the morning. The other day, it was about 4:30 AM, and another day, it was about 5:00 AM. She was wondering why we are street sweeping so early in the morning. And so that'll be something I will ask our city manager, Todd Uhas, to comment on. So that was her comment. Is there any other public comment related to items not on the agenda? Seeing no hands raised or, oh, there we go. So once I unmute you, could you please give us your name?
Hi, my name's Anna Phelps. I live at 4319 Stagecoach. Hi, everyone. Thanks for your time. I wanted to address the speed limit in the, in that area going down to Tallinn Dolly Park. Is everyone able to hear me? Sorry, I'm on my cell phone.
Yes.
Okay, great. So there are 15 mile an hour speed limit signs posted as you turn down to Tallinn Dolly and right after the medical clinic, between Chevron and the medical clinic. And continually, all day long, people are speeding through there, well over 15 miles an hour. We have three homes right in that vicinity that have kids, myself, I have two little ones, a dog. We all have kids between, you know, 18 months up to 10 years old. And I've actually asked somebody, a local, to slow down on that road, and I was given the middle finger. And the medical center has elderly people, sick people going in and out, and people are speeding through there. It's a safety concern. I've, in the past, spoken to city council members about perhaps posting larger speed limit signs and having the sheriff perhaps enforce it within that area, even a speed bump. But I think it needs to be addressed. And, and that's what I wanted to speak on. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, I have another comment here from Sarah. Could you give us your full name for the record? You should be able to talk.
Who is?
Sarah, are you there? You should be unmuted. And I see you had left me, you wanted to comment on code enforcement?
Madam Mayor, since we're having these difficulties, I suggest that maybe we, if she does get back to us, we let her step in.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan, so I will keep messaging her to see what's going on. Okay. So she is not able to talk, but she would like to make a comment. All right, and she's going to type that in for us. So I'm going to give her a moment to do that. And while she's doing that, are there any other comments that anyone would like to make on things not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Big Dave, just to let you know, your phone has some feedback, so I'm going to unmute you. Sometimes, so just to let you know. But I will check back with you frequently. All right. So let's move into staff and member comments while Sarah is typing her comment on code enforcement. So I'm going to begin with city manager Uhas. Go ahead.
Hold on one second.
Actually, it looks like Sarah might be able to make her comment, so I'm going to try her one more time. Let's see. All right, Sarah, why don't you try? Are you on the iPhone now?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, this is actually Sarah Ann Marcus Nova. So we do want to just comment, and this has also been seen on our Facebook page with the Neighborhood Watch group. We've had an influx of code enforcement recently. And first of all, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to, to the workers here in the city, to all you council members that are willing to spend your time to take on these requests and do better for our community. And so we very respectfully and graciously appreciate that. And, you know, we looked at your guys' website and specifically on code enforcement, and it appears that there's three main goals of that. And that is to increase the livability and the quality of life for citizens, also increase our property values. And, and those are all wonderful goals, and they make a lot of sense. But recently, many of us here on Stagecoach, including Anna, who just was on there talking about the speeding issues, and, you know, we have all got several cease and assist orders. Our vehicles have been blanketed with warning notices. And, you know, there's a question that comes to mind, why here and why now? I understand maybe the now, there's never a better time to take care of problems than now, but why here? This includes chalking of our tires, being pulled. We have 48 hours to move, and we have to move 600 feet. Having, for us, we have a camp vehicle, a tent trailer that's parked on our property, but apparently is within 20 feet of the pavement. So we were told that that has to be moved, and it's not stored there, but seasonally. It's usually stored in Wairika in a storage facility, but we bring it home for the camping season and use it regularly throughout the month. So we're getting tagged. We're telling we have to move these things. And it goes back to the original comment I had, which was to increase the quality of life. This has done nothing but decrease our quality of life. There was no issue here on our street, quiet neighborhood for the most part. So we've now, we've now, in a lot of ways, disrupted citizens and their normal way of life by trying to enforce codes that may be really not imperative nor very useful on a small, little neighborhood as ours. And so we're really frustrated. And, and here's some suggestions with not just identifying problems, but a suggestion would be, where is the, you know, the law enforcement education plan? Why hasn't that been printed up and given to the community so we understand the codes? We understand the reasoning behind the codes. A lot of us see a lot of problems throughout the community, and we're not, we're really misunderstanding why we're the ones that are the problem and not these greater, bigger issues such as blacked buildings, rundown homes.
All right, Marcus, that's your three minutes for our public comment, but I'm going to have our city manager Uhas make a comment, but I urge you to maybe put this down in writing for us to take a look at and deliver that to city manager Uhas. That would be very beneficial for us to continue to understand what's going on. So we're going to mute you.
Great, I appreciate your time.
Yep. Thank you. I'm going to mute you, and I actually have another public comment from Bucko. So I'm going to unmute you now. You have your three minutes, and these are for comments on items not on the agenda.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to touch base too on that. I got one of those red tags on North Caldwell on my boats out front, which are way off the road, and I'm a fly fishing guide up here, and I think my boats have nothing to do with impeding the road, not in the way. They're part of my living, how I make money up here, and I just thought it was absolutely ridiculous. And then when I called the guy, he has a total attitude trip, and I just think it's unreasonable what he's doing right now to the city of Dunsmere.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other comments on items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we're going to move into staff and member comments, so I'm going to go back to city manager Uhas if he'd like to be on the pod.
So I've got nothing new to add for this evening, other than on Devin's point about wearing masks. I was on the governor's daily, and he was asked about, well, why are businesses taking the brunt in having to be re-closed when there's a spike? And why aren't we enforcing mask wear? And he mentioned that he, they're moving into the mode where they're going to withhold money to cities and counties that are not enforcing masks. You know, I know down in Chasta, they're in a, you know, Chasta County, they're in a fight with the governor right now about potentially withholding money because nobody's wearing masks that way.
And could you comment on the street sweeping item, about them, street sweeping early in the morning? And then could you comment on code enforcement, please?
Yeah, sure. So on street sweeping, I, that's way too early, and I will get with the Public Works folks and make sure that it's done in a reasonable hour on that. And in code enforcement, you know, what I would say on that is we have been without code enforcement for, I believe, six years. And now that we have a code enforcement officer in place, we're enforcing codes the way they've been enforced in the past. And, you know, there are, you know, some things on the books that were put there by past councils, and it's all on Dunsmere MuniCode site. And if you receive a ticket, there is an appeals process. You can fill out the form that's on our website and come in and appeal any violation that you've gotten.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to move over. Councilmembers, any questions of city manager Uhas?
Um, one, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just the, an update on the situation in Moss Bra Falls?
Sure. In terms of trails, the trail?
Well, both the progress of the trail and trying to keep everybody safe who's insisting on visiting.
Yes. So the trail, we've gotten paperwork from UP that allows an encroachment permit, and the trail folks are working with UP right now in terms of keeping people out of the falls. It's still with Siskiyou County sheriffs to enforce that when they can, but it's kind of a, it's, you know, they're, they're covered pretty thin right now. Occasionally, we have a UP officer up here with a last name, or his name's Daniel Rose, and he's here, but unfortunately, as I mentioned before, he's, his coverage area is Sacramento North and from the east side of the state to the west side. So he's got a large area to cover. It's an unsafe situation. It just, it is. I was down there fly fishing with one of our folks in town, and we watched someone not even turn around when a train is coming and was pretty close to getting clipped.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other questions for city manager Uhas before we move on to Sergeant Westhead? All right, seeing no questions for city manager Uhas, we're going to move on to Sergeant Westhead, so let me go find him. So just a reminder to members of the public that we have closed general public comment, so we do not have any public comment section in staff and member comments. So if you're raising your hand to make a comment, that this is not the time to do that, you can also put your input in the chat function, and we can get to you later. All right, Ben, you should be able to unmute yourself.
All right, everybody hear me all right?
Yep, go ahead.
Hello? Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Yep, go ahead.
All right, getting a little bit of feedback here. I don't have much to report. I just, we're at the end of the 2019, 2020 fiscal year with the first year of the renegotiated contract. The, the numbers, patrol hours are still coming in, but we contracted with the city of Dunsmere for 5,280 hours for the fiscal year, and right now, the numbers that have come in are showing 6,615, but they're going to be closer to probably 6,800 hours, which puts us about 1,500 hours over what was contracted. That's just to say that the city of Dunsmere continues to be a high priority for the sheriff's office, and we just continue to look forward to serving this community.
And could you make a comment on the speed limit, public comment, and the enforcement of that near Tallinn Dolly? And what, you know, some measures that we could take?
Yeah, I, so this isn't the first time I've heard about speeders on that street. In fact, we here a few months ago put one of our radar units on Stagecoach down there. I know that it gets a problem. I did get some feedback from a couple of the residents in that area that it was helping. Right now, the radar unit is placed somewhere else, but should be freed up in about a week or two. So when it's freed up, I will get that radar unit back down there again. With the influx of people coming into the area from Redding and South, visiting our parks, and unfortunately, our waterfalls, we, it'd probably be a good time to put it back down there again. So I will work on that, just give me a couple weeks, I'll have it placed down there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for Ben? All right, thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
All right. Council, we'll now move on to council member comments, so I will begin with council member Keisler. I have quite a bit of feedback from your phone, so I mute you quite a bit. So if you want to make your comments first, that would be great.
I got nothing at this time.
Wow.
All right, thank you. I'm going to mute you, or do you have anything else? Okay, I'm just going to mute you, just to let you know, so that I don't have as much feedback. So councilmember Deutsch, you have any comments for tonight?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I've been hearing a lot about the code enforcement. I know that it's causing a lot of stress, and it's causing a lot of angst. I think what it calls for in a larger picture is that since we have had some gaps in enforcement and new people coming along, et cetera, I recommend that we form a citizen task force. It doesn't have to be something big and fancy, but somebody to review the codes that are there and then ratify the idea that they still are valuable and do fit a strategy and a purpose. So I just recommend that we do that and maybe add that to a future agenda, but I think that would be the best way to incorporate the feelings of the citizens and get them to the point where they can feel comfortable with the way the code enforcement is being managed. My next thing I'd like to point out is that it's really important for everybody right now to take a moment, if you haven't done so, to get online or to go down to the resource center where they can help you and complete the census. The census provides an extreme amount of money that comes into our county based upon the number of people that are registered. You don't need to have a piece of paper that you were mailed. You can simply get on and you can, and make that all happen. So I think that the, the point would be that if we get that large turnout of people responding, we're going to get extra money down the line for the next decade, the next decade, that'll be able to help our citizens. So if everyone were to take a moment to reach out to five friends and just give them a call or send them an email and say, hey, have you done the census yet? It can make us some money. The third thing I'd like to talk about is masks. I support the idea of masks 100%. It's disappointing to me to see that there are places in the town that are not respecting it. I feel that there are a number of places that could turn into a hotspot if we're not careful, and I believe that there should be no political stigma. And if you look at the different places right now that are raging out of control, they were the places that, for the most part, said, we don't have to wear a mask, this is over with. For the sake of the citizens, and as it was mentioned before, we have an extremely large percentage of senior citizens, a senior citizen population that is really a high risk. So don't think about it for yourself. The whole idea of wearing a mask is just as much, if not more so, stopping it from coming from you, if you don't know you have it, to somebody else. I hope we can all get through this without any deaths, but I'm worried about that. Finally, the last thing I have is about fireworks. And I would hope that we could make a clear statement tonight before all is said and done with the Fourth of July coming up, that we all support the idea with, without any hesitation, that we need to have a year without fireworks with the extreme drought that we're in right now. Delay gratification so we can have a city to live in next year. I really am concerned about the drought we're in, and I hope everybody takes it seriously and understand that the fireworks sellers have been letting people know at the sales around the area that Dunsmere has banned fireworks. And I know that the sheriff's department is going to be out there helping us keep an eye out for that, but I am concerned about the sparks and the potential for a devastating fire, so I hope everybody does their best to keep it safe. That's all, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Deutsch. Councilmember, oh, sorry, go ahead, city manager Uhas.
Just to add something to that, I talked to Chief Pedia today, and Cal Fire has offered to be in Dunsmere and enforce the no fireworks ban.
But thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Brian, do you have any comments for tonight? Council member Brian, do you have any comments for tonight?
I would just like to congratulate the city manager on the quality of his prepared budget that we'll be looking at later this evening. He's been dealing with a lot lately and it's important that Dunsmere has this thorough and meaningful of a document. And I'd encourage anyone who's interested in the city's past, but more importantly, its future, like to take some time to read through the opening narrative of where we're at and where we hope to be going. Also available, will be available on our website.
Thank you. Council member Art, do you have any comments for tonight?
I do, Madam Mayor. The first is to thank all the members of the public that are participating in tonight's meeting. We can only improve the work that we do with feedback from the community. So I associate myself with the remarks of the city manager and council member Deutsch on code enforcement. It basically has been sitting in a dusty closet for a number of years and it's legitimate. If we're going to give ourselves grades on pet control, that's going to be a pretty high grade. I have not heard a complaint about pet problems since our community relations officer came on board, new to the community, new to the neighborhoods. And I have had complaints and concerns around stored cars and stored boats. And that's not a high priority with me, but we have charged our officer with giving everybody the same interpretation of the laws. So if we have silly ordinances that need to be changed, let's have the discussion, change them and prioritize what the community values most. The second is a very brief commercial for the Dunsmere Farmer's Market and the Dunsmere Community Garden. They almost sold out again this afternoon at their second session. Julia's from the valley brings up fantastic fruit, cantaloupes, watermelons, onions, tomatoes and so on. The community garden has organically grown herbs, vegetables from right in downtown Dunsmere. They are extremely cost effective for low income members of the community. Bring your E V T card, sign up at the resource center. But it's going to be a beautiful season. Probably next month, we will dedicate the waterfall in the community garden in memory of Ross Taylor, who passed away last year, but was the inspirer and constructor of the fountain. Happy, safe and sane Fourth of July to everybody, thank you.
Thank you, council member Art. All right, I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna see Big Dave has, Big Dave, do you have any comments after hearing everybody else's? I unmuted you.
I realize that I'm gonna miss the food, just like everybody else. But I concur with the safety assessment of this, I think it's for the best this year. And with everything else that's going on, do the task, wear the mask. I mean, it's just that simple. And I believe that the stores should be promoting that. And I think I drove by, I thought, I thought I heard the bar open today. I didn't, didn't know that they could be open, but whatever. So I wish everybody a happy Fourth of July weekend. Yeah, I'm gonna go ride my motorcycle.
All right, thank you. All right, and I'll jump into my comments here really quick. Again, I hope everyone, like the rest of us on council, I hope everyone has a safe Fourth of July weekend. The traffic is already happening. I, it took me probably like 20 minutes to get up to Mount Shasta to work today, so they are in town. I, I also would like to show support for wearing a mask in public. You know, I understand if you don't want to necessarily wear it if you're hiking out in, you know, the middle of nowhere and you're walking down the street and nobody's around you. But when you do start to get in more crowded situations, it is a lifesaver for some people when you wear a mask. And so, you know, if it's 20 minutes wearing that mask and you can get back in your car and you're fine, you know, it's a simple act of kindness and, and maybe you can think of it that way for other people. As far as other things, the code enforcement thing is something that I've heard about and I've been talking to our code enforcement officer, I've been talking to our city manager. There are definitely some code amendments that are needed to make things a little bit more clear to also, you know, again, similar to other individuals who made comments tonight, you know, reassess what we're comfortable with as a city. Storing boats and storing vehicles on the street can pose problems for some areas. That may be more narrow or maybe a high traffic area and those are blocking some of the viewpoints for drivers. And so some, those are some of the things that we take into consideration when we're drafting codes. So, you know, that's not necessarily an excuse for the current code, but it's just some of the things we have to take into account. But yes, there is definitely some room for improvement and I'm trying to help out any way that I can for city manager and our code enforcement officer to make those things much more clear for the general public as well as our code enforcement officer. The only other fun things I've been dealing with is just looking at the budget for, for tonight and looking at some more creative ways to free up some more of our general funds to be able to give out money for our community promotions funding, to be able to fund some of these more special projects we haven't been able to in the past. And there's been some really good headway going forward for street sweeping and vegetation management and different things like that. On June 29th, which Big Dave day, I went and pulled for about four or five hours of invasive weeds in the area in North Dunsmere. And if you've been near Hedge Creek, it is covered in invasive Scotch broom as well as sweet peas. So that's what I've been doing with some of my time. So if you do see that around town, to pull that and try and get rid of it before it, you know, causes a lot more biological devastation and then picking up litter as well. So just been kinda taking it easy a little bit this week, but I will be back into the swing of things after we get through the budget. All right, so I have no more comments tonight. So I'm going to move us over to item number six, which is committee reports. There was a disaster planning advisory committee, but I don't see Linda on this call. So I will get in touch with them to get a report hopefully for our next meeting. Are there any other committee reports? I know finance met, but we're going to basically talk about the budget and the new, new items for tonight, so. Any committee reports? All right, seeing no other committee reports, we'll move into approval of the minutes. Item number seven, city council regular meeting for June 18th, 2020. Is there any discussion on the minutes?
And a mayor only to note that Devon is still on the call and we reappointed her in absentia. So we get to thank her more directly this time around. Thank you, Devon, for another turn.
Yes, thank you for reminding me of that. Thank you, Devon, for being interested and wanting to serve again, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Devon.
All right. Go ahead, Big Dave.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of June 18th, 2020.
Okay, is there a second for approval of the minutes as submitted?
I'll second.
All right, so moved by council member Kaisler, seconded by council member Deutsch to approve the city council regular meeting minutes of June 18th, 2020 as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? All right, motion carries and the minutes are approved for our June 18th meeting, thank you very much. We'll now move into our consent agenda. We have only one item tonight, which is the check register for June 13th through June 26th, 2020. Any discussion?
I move we adopt the consent agenda.
All right. So a motion by council member Deutsch, seconded by council member Kaisler to adopt the consent agenda, item A. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote, just because it's hard to hear Big Dave. Council member Deutsch.
Aye, here.
Council member Kaisler.
Here.
Council member Brian.
Here.
Council member Art.
Aye.
And myself is also an aye, motion carries, check register is approved. We'll now move into item number nine, which is a public hearing. We do have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. And so this is for resolution CCR 20-13, a resolution of the city council of the city of Dunsmere requesting the election clerk of the county of Siskiyou to place on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot a measure to adopt a sales and transaction tax as a general tax requiring a majority vote. So this is a public hearing regarding the 1.5% sales tax increase that we voted on giving direction at our last meeting. So after this hearing, we will hold another vote on adopting the resolution to ask the county clerk to put this on the November 3rd ballot. So this is just the process and paperwork for the elections and placing that tax on. City manager Yu Haas, is there anything else that I forgot on that summary?
No, I think you hit it really well. It's, it's a very strange procedural matter. Since we, we passed the resolution calling the question of a general tax to be put on the ballot, this is just, as you said, it's adopting a resolution for the ordinance, the ordinance itself to be put on the ballot should, should it pass.
And Wendy, do you have anything to add to that as well?
I don't think so, I think you guys have summarized it pretty well.
Council members, do you have any clarifying questions before I open the public hearing?
Oh, ma'am.
I have one, Madam Mayor. That is just on a approximate basis, if the citizens, the voters say yes to this tax measure in November of this year, when in the next 24 months will the city actually begin to receive the incremental tax revenues?
Um, I believe Blake is on the phone. Blake, can you answer that question for us?
All right, I'll mute myself, cool. I don't remember exactly when, but it is a good like eight months after passage, somewhere in that timeframe.
If I recall, if it passes in November, and this is back when Randy was explaining it, we're estimated to see our first proceeds in about the month of May or June.
That's my understanding as well.
Because first, if it does pass, the proceeds go towards some of the, some of the costs of implementing its collection. And then it goes through to us.
Before the end of the fiscal year we're about to enter.
We would potentially get one month of revenue from it.
Thank you.
Are there any other clarifying questions at this point before I open the public hearing? Seeing none from our council members, I'm gonna open up, I'm gonna open the public hearing at 6:44 P M. Members of the public, if you would like to make a comment regarding adopting a resolution to place the 1.5% sales tax increase on the November ballot as a general tax, this is your time to speak. And first off, I have Devon. Feel free to, should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just curious, I don't think I know what our current tax rate is before this increase.
All right, so typically we don't go back and forth and discuss, but if you have any other discussion points, you can bring them up now and then we'll answer that once we get to discussion.
I'm sure we need the money and I'm in support of it. I'm just curiosity, I'd just like that piece of information put out there, that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other comments for the public hearing regarding a 1.5 sales tax increase to be placed on the ballot? Again, you can go to the participant panel and hit the triple dots and raise your hand and I will unmute you or you can let me know in the chat function that you'd like to make a public comment and I can unmute you. All right, I'm not seeing any movement for any other public comments, so I'm going to and city manager Yu Haas has let everyone know in the chat function what our current tax rate is. All right, seeing no other public comments, I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:46 P M. And I will now enter us into council member discussion and I'm going to start with council member Art. Do you have any discussion on the matter?
No, as a member of the finance committee, I defer to our chairman to tell everybody about the consensus we've reached around this matter, thank you.
Council member Kaisler, are you still with us? I saw you got off the phone.
I'm still here, but I'm I'm with Peter, let's refer to the chairman.
Council member Brian, do you have any discussion on the matter at hand?
You know, I think I'd just like to comment that a lot of work's been put into improving Dunsmere by this council and moving forward into a new era where we're not a town that used to be a railroad town, but a town that confidently is itself, is able to reimagine a new sort of prosperity. And that this is a big part of that. There've been a lot of citizen input and if anyone would like to know more about it, my information's at City Hall, I'd be more than happy to discuss my perspective on it with anyone.
Thank you. Council member Deutsch, do you have any comments?
Yes, ma'am. I've been hearing for the last several years about the, the pool and the library and the circle of concern around that, and I totally understand that. I think that there is not a single member of the council, my guess would be, that doesn't fully support both the library and the pool. But I think as a city to rise to the level that Vice Mayor Brian had just mentioned, where we can look at ourselves as a healthy city striving, striving on its own to cast a new future, we have to get over the idea that one thing or another is some kind of special case. Each is special. The problem we're facing in the large run is that inflation is reality and the cost of everything is going up. And it's not that we're out there wasting money, it's that we're trying to cover the needs in our budget. And I hope that going forward, that all the citizens that care about the library and about the pool can recognize that when we sit down as a council, if you could look back at any of the decisions we've made and if you look at the budget, you can find that we've been transparent about everything we're doing. We're not trying to hustle one thing one way or another. And what we're doing is simply saying that reality says we need more money. The one thing about a sales tax is, is that it does in large part fall more on the people on the outside coming in than on the people living here. Unfortunately, any tax does have its impact on the local citizens. But as a city, I just want to one last time say, we have to get over the idea of looking at it as simply, are we going to save the library or are we going to save the pool? We need to together recognize that we're working to balance all the different needs of the city and we respect the pool and respect the library, but we need to in general raise our taxes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council member Art, you have a, you have a comment?
Well, one of the points that Vice Mayor Brian didn't make, but makes all the time in our finance committee is he was part of the negotiating team with the sheriff's office for the current contract. And our de facto police chief, as we close out the fiscal year, just reported we paid for 1,500 hours and we got 1,800 hours. That's an extraordinary effort on behalf, behalf of the sheriff's office. And I don't think anybody in the community over the next 24 months wants to see any reduction in law enforcement services. So there is a linkage between this item and the budget we're about to discuss. And all I hope is that we could all build community support for the prosperity that Mr. Brian imagines. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, are there any other comments for tonight? Would anyone like to make a motion to move forward?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Okay, so council member Brian. Is there a second?
I'm gonna give it
I'm going to give it to Council Member Arth. And so the motion on the table is a motion to approve Resolution CCR 20. Go ahead.
Can I have it? Because both, it just would look bad. They're both on the committee.
You can have the first motion, Dave.
Okay.
Okay. So Council Member Kiesler motions, Council Member Arth seconds. Is that what I'm hearing?
Is that all right?
That's what I hear.
Yeah.
I think it looks better to the, to the world.
Okay. All right. So just to clarify, the motion on the table is a motion to approve Resolution CCR 2020-13, resolution of the City Council of the City of Dunsmere requesting the election clerk of the County of Siskiyou to place on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot, a measure to adopt a sales and transaction tax as a general tax requiring a majority vote by title only. Any other discussion?
No, ma'am.
Hearing none, I'll move into roll call vote. Council Member Deutsch?
Aye.
Council Member Bryan?
Aye.
Council Member Kiesler?
Aye.
Council Member Barth?
Aye.
And myself is an aye, motion carries. So we will now move from our public hearing. We have no old business agendas for tonight, but we do have new business, which is the discussion of the 2020-2022 draft budget. So City Manager Uhas, are you and Blake going to take this, or Council Member Bryan, how would you like to proceed?
I might, I think probably if City Manager would like to introduce it, it's fundamentally his, his document, and he's done a wonderful job putting all the pieces together.
City Manager Uhas, why don't you take?
There's a music play.
Yeah, the Imperial Death Star merch. No.
The city, per our recommendation last year, we now have a two-year budget. I know that's something our auditor and City Council's been in favor of.
So I do have, just to let everyone know, I do have the budget pulled up for our share screen, so if you do reference anything, please let me know the page number, and I will scroll to it so that everyone can participate.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is just basically remind people where we're at. We were shut down for a number of months, and so our sales tax, or TUT, was significantly diminished, and TOT, which is from businesses that provide lodging, was down by a little over 80%. And so when we went forward and looking at this budget, we, we looked at the hit that we've taken so far and extended that out. And given that we've got a pretty bare bones budget to start with, we've had to do some significant pairing, and the way we started with the budget is, we were pretty much running on muscle and bone, and the things that we were proposing to forego for at least the time being until we figure out how we're going to recover, are really getting down to essential services. So Blake's going to walk us through, and then I can talk about the work done with the Finance Committee and what their recommendations are. And I'll just let Blake take it away and run through.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Would it be possible to share Blake's screen?
Yeah, I can definitely do that. Blake is unmuted, and, let me see.
Hello.
Hello, Blake. I'm going to try and give you the ability to share your screen.
Okay, sounds good. If it doesn't work out, I know you had it on your screen as well.
So you should be able to share your screen.
Got it. Everybody got that? I would have to click this button, too.
Got it.
Yeah. So I just wanted to run through a general overview of the entire budget packet, how to read it, remind everybody about the account code structures and things like that. So I think we're starting on page 11 of your guys' budget packet. This is the, this is the budget on the screen. That's not part of the agenda packet, so you won't see the page numbers there. But as you can see, title page, table of contents, and then we have our org chart, vision statement that was adopted, I think, probably like three years ago now. Here's some goals. I'm just going to run through this, this quickly. I'll pause, and if anybody does have any questions, feel free to jump in. But there's the City Manager budget message. So here we have, jumping to page 11, for those that don't have screen viewing capabilities, we're on page 11 of the, no, we're on page
11.
Agenda packet, 21 of the agenda packet, which shows the personnel budget. So that just shows the entire staff of the city, got their positions across the top. Going downward, you've got their salaries and any kind of extra, the extra benefits, so including liability insurance and so forth. Then further down on page 21 still, you see a bunch of percentages. So that's just a divvying up of each individual staff member into the different funds. And so to remind everybody again, fund, we have the general fund, and then we have enterprise funds. General fund is all government, just the standard typical government. There are no restrictions on those general funds. Then you move into the enterprise funds, which are like our water, sewer.
Still there, Blake?
What happened?
I think we just lost him for a second. All right. So Blake has gone dark. Let's see. City Manager, oh, City Manager. Okay. That's okay, though, because we have backups. Let me just pull up the agenda packet again, so that I can do this. Thank you, guys, for being patient with us as we experienced some technical difficulties. I'm going to share this. And unfortunately, City Manager Uhas, you might have to do this from memory.
Learn to understand much better if I can get.
I've heard that too many times.
All right. So I believe Blake was on discussing the different types of funding. City Manager Uhas, are you able to take over?
Well, I think what, so it's, I can do this generally, and then I can go into some of the assumptions that we made. So the way, what we've done differently this year is we've laid out each of the funds, then there's various enterprise funds or sewer and water, and there's the airport fund, which is in, has been borrowing against general fund dollars for a number of years, and that's been an ongoing issue and something that we want to start to address with this budget, and is listed in some of the goals and objectives that Blake mentioned.
By the way, Blake is back, so you are safe.
No, you're doing great, Todd. You know what you're doing.
So I just, I just have the document shared online, so we'll just go forward. So just let me know when you want me to move forward.
I think I was remoted into our remote connection.
Oh, gotcha.
So that might have been a little bit dicey. So you're seeing there, the governmental funds. That's just the start of the governmental funds. And that very next page after that talks about the general fund revenue on page 23. So there's a good chunk of the revenues. I just want to point out that our biggest portion of revenues is through property tax. So just wanted to point that out. The next page, page 24, is, shows the bottom line. So you see there, oh, I should point out here, too, that the first column says 1819 actual, then the next column is 1920 budget, then the column after that is 2021 budget, and then the column after that is 2122. So you will see that throughout this budget, throughout these pages. And so that's just where you're going to see the 2021 budget and the 2122 budget. And we use two years because it's, of course, July 1, happy fiscal year, everybody. July 1 to June 30 is the fiscal year. So this is July 20, essentially all the way through June 30 of 2022. But it is split up into those two years, fiscal years. So back to that bottom line, you'll see there, kind of in the middle of the page, page 24, that the budget for 2021 is projected at a deficit of 53,000. And then you see 2122 budget at a deficit of around 19,000, almost 20,000. And then below that, I'm just pointing out that we see that there are reserves that are projected. These are not actual reserves, but my projected reserve of 300,000. So starting as of, you know, yesterday, we had a reserve of 300,000. If you subtract out what the projected budget deficit would be, then you get that $246,568 figure. So that would be the reserves at the end of this current fiscal year, or this current budget. And then again, you see that subtracted 19,000 to get the reserves at the end of fiscal year 2122. So that's
Council Member Arth, sorry. Council Member Arth, do you have a quick question?
Yeah, I just wanted Blake to go to the general fund revenues, our last item, the sales and use tax, and walk through, I assume that the projected revenues don't include any revenues from the tax measures. So you show a little under 150 for 1819. We look pretty good in the year that's about to end. We're predicting a significant dip for 2021, and then some level of economic recovery in 2122 at 150,000.
So correct, all of that correct, and indeed without the sales tax increase.
Thank you.
All right.
Great. So, so I just wanted to just point out that general fund revenue sections. So then flash forward the next, you know, 10 or so pages are the expenditures for each individual department. So as you see there, City Council, City Manager, keep going. So it still has kind of the same similar structure that you see with the 1819 actual, 1920 budget, 2021. Yep, good job. Juliana, perfect.
I'm not going to go super fast, so people can kind of see.
Yeah. One thing to point out, just go back a couple of slides, page 37, the streets and roads and buildings and grounds. I did want to point out that we are adding a, what we're calling a capital improvement plan. So this is essentially, we've taken a lot of the big ticket items that the streets and roads and Public Works Department has, like the grader or the dump truck and things like that. So we take up, we sum up the entire totals of all of those costs, and divide them out by their estimated useful lives, i.e. the dump truck might have a useful life of 25 years, whereas the weed eater has a life of two years. So we, we get basically a per year dollar figure, that is essentially what we would have to save or spend to be able to replace all of these things. And so just pointing out, that's relatively new, that that has not been in the past budgets. So that's a good fiscal strategy to try and make sure we account for those. Okay, so then you did show the community promotions funding page, page 39. So that is, I'm assuming we'll probably get to that a little later. We'll skip over it for now, to then come back to it. But the key points there is that you see a requested column, a Finance Committee recommendation column, and then the last column will be the City Council adopted column. So moving on, enterprise funds, like I said, these are funds that are for a specific purpose, and they, they kind of run like businesses in a way. So general overview there, keep going. Talandali Park is, of course, the park for, that's underneath the bridge. Sewer, water, solid, or solid waste and water than airport, local transportation, good. Gas tax is tax, you know, tax received from the state of California for people that buy gas. And then, oh, I guess I should point out, too, real quick, the water and sewer departments both have also a water improvement and a sewer improvement budget as well. And so that's actually the first time that we've been budgeting those things as well.
Just, can I add just one thing to that? In the gas tax piece, gas tax revenue is down, obviously, because of the, you know, just the drop in people driving during the pandemic. Sorry, Blake.
Right. Yep. No problem.
So that's the third whammy we've got hit with, then, I guess you could say. TUT, TOT, and gas tax.
Well, gas tax will be a year delayed. So how it works is, the state doesn't give you your allocation for gas tax until one year, one year after. So we won't, we won't feel the gas tax reduction until next fiscal year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, somewhat, somewhat, we, I, I am actually seeing a decline in the gas taxes right now.
50%, right? 50, 50% we see early, and then the other 50% is later, isn't that right?
So if I'm, I might correct that and say, you might be thinking of the snow removal.
Oh, that could be, that could be, yeah.
If we spend $20,000 this year in snow removal expenditures, the following year, we will get $10,000 back.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of. Thanks.
Yeah, sure thing. So with gas tax, I guess I should say, there is a, the lead California city's executive director, or maybe some other title, does a projection of gas taxes. And so that's how we create these budgets. So if I look at what his numbers were for 1920, the fiscal year that we just ended, I do see it a little bit lower than what they projected. But they're also not 100% right all the time as well. So then we have their Economic Development Block Grant. So those are grants that I've done for, for profit businesses. And then the next one is Community Development Block Grants. And so these are loans that the city has made quite some time ago, and then people are paying them back. So we are budgeting these for the first time. So if you haven't seen this in the past, you are
How are we doing on that, Blake?
We're doing fine. Yep. We, I do, I will say that we do need to have a loan committee established. We do have a member right now, but we do need to get that going again, because we do have a new program coming up. And, but we do need to meet as a loan committee to discuss these and bring them more up to speed. But we are doing fine with them, Bruce, to answer your question.
Thank you.
So then finally, we have last page, a South Dunsmere sewer assessment. That's simply an assessment that's been placed on the property tax rolls, or property tax bills of people in South Dunsmere that joined the sewer system. So this is not a big fund, but it is now being budgeted for the first time. And then finally, last page is the resolution, should this go forward? And we can always change dates. So that's a general overview that I wanted to go through.
Do you want, yeah, thank you, Blake, and City Manager Uhas. Blake, do you want to go back to community promotions and talk about that? Or Council Member Bryan, do you want to tackle that?
I think we could, but I'd probably be in favor of any clarifying questions with the budget on this general overview.
Okay. Are there any questions from council members? All right. I see no. Oh, I do have a chat function. Oh, City Manager Uhas is muted. Go ahead, City Manager Uhas.
I have to unmute yourself now, Todd.
Great. Okay. So do you want me to walk through, you know, kind of an overview of pieces of this budget?
Sure. We didn't have any other clarifying questions, so.
Okay. So, you know, we talked about the impacts of COVID and, and the TUT and TOT and gas tax. Okay, so um, you know, we talked about the impacts of COVID and, and the T U T and T O T and uh gas tax. We um, so when we're looking at things that uh staff recommends and the finance committee recommends for this budget, you know, we did mention that we went to two years um that we would uh stop funding Siskiyou County Economic Development for a year and reassess. Um, I want to mention actually just to, that just uh entered my head, one of the things that we mentioned is during the pandemic, just the huge hit that hoteliers and people that provide lodging um faced. The one bit of good news and bad news is um there uh um the folks that I've talked to are booked now through um September and October. The bad news is that it brings people up from areas where there are a lot of cases of COVID. But um that would indicate that we might get some kind of rebound from T O T. And so um as we figure out on sales tax and with T O T. If we do rebound, one of the suggestions um that I've made is that we revisit this budget at the end of September to see actually how we've done and see if we need to uh readjust. So um, again, we went to a two-year budget. Um. Uh, so typically in, in uh accounting, uh cities want to maintain a twenty percent reserve and um, you know, I, I canvassed other city managers in the, in the region, other cities and in the varies on what their reserves are. In one case, uh, one city has no reserve, so they actually went to laying people off. Ours has been at about twenty percent, and with this budget, it would bring us down in the twenty twenty-one fiscal year to a reserve of twelve percent. And if um, if there was such thing as a rainy day, I think this qualifies. Um, so some of the things that we are um recommending that we cut for the timing to make that twelve percent is um discontinuing cemetery maintenance for the, the uh, the remainder of this year. A, due to non-performance and B, we have an agreement with Siskiyou County Sheriff's Office that those uh folks that need to provide community service will be supervised and they would do um uh, you know, maintenance on the cemetery. And if we need to do some additional cleanup, that we would uh seek some uh support from members of the community that are willing to and have stepped up before to do this kind of stuff. Uh, we have made uh a suggestion that we have a placeholder for fifty thousand dollars in cap cannabis revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And um, why we've made that is we have our first um licensed uh first cannabis business license that's been issued for manufacturing, distribution and cultivation. We have another entity that has met um all requirements and I'm going to issue them their business license for um uh for retail and for distribution. And we have another entity uh element seven that they are only missing one item from the state and they're ready to get up and running. So uh, we're going to have at least three up and running very, very shortly. Um, as I mentioned before, the airport is continually a drain on the general fund. We do have some uh relief coming in the form of been granted twenty thousand in CARES Act funds for the airport that we can use to pay, help pay back the general fund. It's supposed to be for lost uh revenue due to COVID nineteen. And since there isn't a whole lot of work going on up there, we got special dispensation from the FAA gods that we can use this to help pay back our general fund. And we have that money programmed in our budget as we speak. Well, it's in the Delphi system. We just need to draw it down. Um, the next is looking at uh the children's park. They, we own right next to that property, a piece of land that's been surveyed. It's a paper street and um we are, I'm talking to the owner of uh Children's Park to uh see about a land swap between the two parcels that would save us some money on rent for Children's Park per month. I'm negotiating up at the airport with the Dunsmere Rod and Gun Club. Right now they're paying a very minimal amount. Uh, they provide, so it's, it's a tricky situation here, given the, the service it provides for um C H P and Mount Shasta officers and others that want to get up and um and get their necessary range time. And these folks are self-sufficient, have built this from um, from grants, and they've, they've done a ton of work up there. So we, and they're bringing in, I've looked at their financials, they're not bringing in a lot of money per year, but we need to be able to um be seeing some revenue per month from that um uh, from the Rod and Gun Club to, you know, to, to help knock down the uh um, the drain on the general fund budget.
Like nine dollars a month?
Well, right now it's um, it's, I believe it's a buck a month, Blake.
A buck?
Correct. Is that right?
Five dollars a year.
Yeah, five dollars a year.
Five dollars a year, so um very low. So working on um uh, yeah, I've been getting pushed back on pretty limited amounts of revenue. So we're, we're, might get to the point, I know council's already passed a resolution that if we can't come do a uh, a deal with the Rod and Gun Club, then um we have a termination clause that we might need to exercise, but working on that. Um, we have uh proposed amounts of community promotions funding and we're asking that we curtail uh, um, you know, uh, the things that we've typically supported in the past, including training for staff, Lola dinners and training for um uh counselors. Uh, we are um have proposed funding the Chamber of Commerce, and we've got new leadership there and um feel very hopeful about the work they're doing. And we need them to kick start some economic development along with city programs. The Dunsmere Community Resource Center, uh, they provide vital resources during this time, especially uh in the middle of this pandemic and we need to do whatever we can to uh keep them up and running. The finance committee suggested that we fund them at half of their uh requested amount, which is ten thousand dollars. What staff is suggesting is that we raise that by a thousand dollars by using program income from the Economic Development Block Grant Program, which is essentially proceeds from loans that are getting paid back to up that amount by uh or up to uh to six thousand. The library, of course, is vital resource and um they've been uh, you know, they're always um, just, it's, it's one of those things you just don't want to touch. They've asked for twenty-five thousand dollars. And the finance committee has recommended that um we fund them at twenty-two thousand five hundred. And um, let's see, and Parks and Rec, the, the uh, the pool isn't going to be open this year. So the recommendation is uh, you know, they, they know the funding they can get as well, but we're recommending um fun, not funding them this year, their request was for twelve thousand dollars. Moving on, trying to see what else I may not have hit. Uh, part of this is we're paying um the uh for the use of the North City Hall parking lot and the U P overflow lots along Sacramento Ave, consider suspending uh payments for both of those locations and figure out a way to park on street with of course obeying regulations. And that would save us a considerable full amount, and then we can revisit as, as um we see how we're doing at the end of the summer. We passed a one-year solid waste contract extension with Clemmons. And um, we're continuing negotiations with them and putting together an R F P to see if um you know, uh, given all the new state mandates, where we're going to be and who is going to come in with the best proposal. So um, that is it in um a nutshell. We have also a number of goals and objectives, but I think maybe we want to pause here and see what people.
Yeah, I'm ready, got my hand raised, Madam Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Chrysler.
Okay, a couple of things. I'd like to back up a little bit. Um, let's go back to that community promotion funding page. I'll start at the bottom and work my way up. And you guys, parking wrecks, you got, they wanted well, regardless what they wanted, we're not going to give them nothing. Um, they have a community building that they maintain, they have the botanical gardens that they maintain, and they have the football field that they maintain as well as the pool.
Um, might I uh clarify a little bit there? Why the finance committee uh suggested that? It does look drastic. Um, but.
Yeah, it does, man.
Rodriguez came and, and told us that he needed the money to operate the pool. Um, and that his hundred and sixty thousand dollars was more than enough to run everything else. And that if he got the money this year, he would save it for next year's pool. So that, that, that's why the finance committee moved forward.
Okay, okay, then, then that's a good, that's good. I'm, I'm happy with that. Let's go up to library, okay, library, take it. Um, the next ones is, okay, I'm gonna jump around here. The Dunsmere Award Dinner, okay, we're not having no awards. I concur with that assessment. However, we got the Chamber of Commerce at fifteen. And we're going to give them the fifteen. And then we got the Resource Center that we wanted ten. And that we want to give them five and kick them an extra grand. What, why couldn't we give the Chamber ten and the Resource Center ten? Being that we're not going to give the Park and Recreation anything or the Dunsmere Dinner Awards. Um, the, the money still stays the same. And you guys realize that I, I'm going to give a shout out for Matthew, I mean for Stephen Bryant. Um, with this Corona thing we got going on, he's feeding seventy percent more people than normal. And I mean, it, they, you guys want to talk about um front lines and, and uh your warriors. The people at Resource Center are that. They're out there feeding the people, getting stuff to them, getting them information, getting them help. I kind of want to, my vote would be if I got a vote, I, I'd kind of like.
Member Chrysler, we are still just in clarifying questions. Uh, we haven't gone to public comment yet. Um, but if you want to finish your thought, let me know.
Well, I, I, I think that it would be fair to go ten and ten. Do beings that the, the situation is what it is. And, and I didn't know that Mike came to you saying that everything else was cool. That's good news. So thank you.
Did you have any other questions for the budget so far?
No, y'all know that this budget gives us all a lump in our throat. And we're trying to make, you know, pea soup out of tomatoes, but uh, I think you guys are doing a good job. I, I commend the finance committee for getting it to this port as well as staff. You guys have all done a great job. I appreciate this. Um, but I, I do think that we could maybe share that wealth a little bit there with the resource center. Those are my thoughts. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, so council members, again, we're just in clarifying questions and then we'll move to public comment. Uh, members of the public, you can start lining up if you would like to make a public comment. Um, Councilmember Art, did you have a question?
Well, just a, a clarifying procedural question. I voted for the budget in Finance Committee with the understanding we as a full council would have a chance to vote on the individual community promotions, funding decisions. I was the odd man out. I was in the minority on the votes for the haircut to the Resource Center and the library. And I was assured by the chair and I hope by you as well that we will get a chance after public comment to vote on those.
Yeah, I think we'll probably have to separate community promotions funding from the overall budget resolution. Uh, we'll have to handle that before we approve that resolution. So I'll make a note that we'll probably have two different discussion sections.
I, I do concur with that procedure. Um, while we're considering that and how we approach such a large document. Does anyone have any um questions regarding the enterprise funds? Um, we could do a little overview of where they're at. Everyone knows the airport right now.
But I think the one, I think, I think the one thing that should be pointed out, so people are clear, is that um, we do have um, I'm sorry, I just drew a blank. I just had a senior moment. Go ahead.
So I mean, with Talon Dolly Park, no one has particular questions on, I'd imagine. Um, I just wanted to let people know that there are some issues with sewer revenue. It's much lower than it was projected to be in its five-year plan. Um, we're kind of just investigating, Blake's been taking the lead on that, uh, why it's the case. But probably within a year, we will have to revisit kind of what our plan is unless it corrects itself. Water, there should be good news soon, but I hear uh things are going very well there. And then um, Todd, do you want to say a word about solid waste? I know we, we talked about how we're kind of extending what we've been doing.
Yeah, we um, uh, at a recent council meeting, we extended like once again, uh Clemmons is a solid waste contract for an additional year. That leaves them in limbo. They've got trucks that are starting to, to fail. What we need to do and I'm in the process of right now is you know, uh, try, uh, going through the R F P process. And um, I have talked to Bernie Disposal. They seem like they have some interest in submitting a, a response to the R F P. Typically, when we put out an R F P like this, these companies will um contract out um with a, an accounting firm that, that specializes in solid waste and, and all the intricacies of the laws and things that have changed in terms of recycling and, and um, and others and uh, you know, and carb uh, California Air Resource Board, et cetera, et cetera. And so we need to get up to snuff with state law. But um, you know, we're uh, I'm working on getting an R F P together so we can float that out there and see if uh, what kind of responses we get back and what the level of service will get out of it um versus what the cost will be. And it's not necessarily that we should be chasing down the least expensive. It's just the best bang for the buck.
Is there any other comments, Blake or Todd, on e- enterprise funds to help council understand their position?
Matthew, the thing I was going to say before was that we're coming up on the need to relook at the water in general, because we did have a five-year plan and we're coming to the end of that. So I just want to keep raising the flag that we're going to need to readdress that soon.
Thank you.
Yeah, great point. I don't have anything else.
Okay, any other clarifying questions on the budget from council members before I open this up for public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move us into public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to uh comment on this item? So you can go, you can either go into the chat function or the participants, oops, Stephen Bryant. Thank you, go ahead.
I thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to uh, first of all, thank the finance committee in the city. Um, you got a very tough decision on your hand. I've been able to make a couple of the finance committees and um listen in to all the discussions regarding the situation of the, of Dunsmere and I want to thank uh Councilman Chrysler too for his comments about pointing out the fact that we're feeding seventy percent more people. I am worried going into the winter time. I've said before, we're doing well with our food at this time because we pulled in numerous different resources to help supplement, including Great Northern Services, Shasta Regional Foundation, United Way, two-one-one and donations from the community. Um, but that can only sustain for so long. Um, I'm beating down every bush I can, writing multiple grants to every organization I can find that fits into what we do in Dunsmere. As most of you know, grant writing is a lot of work and not very much payoff. But that being said, I'm, I am doing my due diligence to bring in as much funding from as many different resources and getting as many different organizations involved. Um, we're lucky to live in a community with a lot of great volunteer. We're lucky to live in a community with a lot of great volunteer support and community members that really care about the community and each other. But I am worried going into the future in, 10,000 is not a lot, but I get it with this budget. But I'm very appreciative of the positive comments regarding the Resource Center, and if you can find it, you know, at all to help support us in the hard work and the important work that we're doing to try to keep the citizens hopeful and the outlook of our community positive. A lot of the work we've done, I've said this in the past, but we were all about preventative work and getting people a hand up, not a handout. Getting them, keeping them on their feet, keeping them going, keeping their chins up, and keeping a positive outlook on life. So we're trying to fit a lot of needs in the community. A lot of the work we've done in the last three to four months has changed dramatically. We're no longer doing as many community events as we did in the past. Social gatherings have gone away. But now we've spent a lot of time and effort with food, with getting people unemployment, getting them their stimulus checks, getting them to fill out their census, getting them to stay positive and do online courses. So thank you all for the hard work you do. And I thank you to the community members that sit on these different committees and volunteer their time, too. And I'm available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to give public comment on the 2020 to 2022 draft budget? You may also give comments on the community promotions funding as well. All right. I don't see any hands up, and I don't see anyone on the chat. So I'm going to close public comment related to the 2020-2022 draft budget and move us into council member discussion. And I'm gonna lead off with Councilmember Kiesler. Would you like to finish your discussion from earlier?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to, I don't know, I'd like to make a motion to amend the Community Promotions Funding page, page 39 of this packet.
To read as what?
I would like to make a motion that we split the request and that what we're given so that both the Chamber of Commerce and the Community Resource Center receive $10,000. And everything else, I guess I'm okay with.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilmember Deutsch.
I disagree with that idea. I mean, I certainly support the idea of giving the Resource Center their original amount, which would be an extra $4,000. But I just don't like the idea of taking it away from another group of people that are as passionate and work just as hard. I think $4,000 in the long run, supporting two organizations that do so much for the city would be better than getting one by taking some away from the other. So that's my only comment.
So just really, just really quick, Councilmember Deutsch, we don't have a second yet for the motion?
I know. That's why I wanted to get it out there.
Okay.
Big Dave, I find it reasonable. It was very difficult to cut either of these. And the Finance Committee, as a whole, sees the perspective that the Chamber needs to be taking the lead in helping the economy in general. We also very much realize that the most direct good you can do is give money to the Resource Center, it sometimes seems, because they are the front lines. But I like kind of what your thoughts are. And I do think that, in being true to my intentions with Councilman Arth's thought of us taking them on item by item, that we should vote individually on them. But in terms of recommendation, I'd support your motion as a second.
All right. So there's a motion and a second, so that now we'll open up for discussion. So just to reiterate, so Councilmember Kiesler, I took the liberty of summing up your motion a little bit. So what I have right now is there's a motion to amend the Community Promotions allocations to allocate $10,000 to both the Community Resource Center and the Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 2021. So, Councilmember Deutsch, did you have anything else you'd like to add for discussion on the motion at hand?
I feel like Sophie and Sophie's Choice right now.
All right.
I'm gonna feel terrible, I'm gonna feel terrible if this goes through. I'm, you know, I'll go with whatever the vote is, but I don't feel like taking something away from one group to pay for the other. That's my comment. I'll leave it up to the rest of the council.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilmember Kiesler.
If I only have this much money to deal with, and I happen to do an adjustment, then, Bruce, this is the only adjustment that we can be done. If the Finance Committee wants to bump up that total, okay. And if council wants to do that, but we're squeezing, if they're telling me these are the dollars, and that's what we're gonna give, I, that's what I'm, the motion in the second is to adjust the dollars given.
And gentlemen, I think we do have the 1,000. So, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe it could be 9,000 in this scenario to the Community Resource Center, because they'll be the extra 1,000, or 10,000 to them, and 11,000 to the Chamber.
Correct.
So, closer to parity, in terms of keeping the Chamber robust.
Let me just point out, let me just point out that the current, the current budget does have 42,500 in the budget.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Arth, you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Well, I agree with Councilmember Deutsch. If you look at the entire page of community promotion funding, we're going from a little over $74,000 in 1819 to $76,000 in the fiscal year we're closing out. And the Finance Committee is recommending dropping that to 42,000, a tiny fraction of our overall general fund budget for entities, nonprofit entities, that we agree are the heart and soul of our community. So the big picture for the budget is we're dipping into our reserves, the incremental amount that we're dipping into our reserves to fully fund the Chamber and the Community Resource Center is next to nothing. And I do want to comment, the deal we reached with the awards dinner people is if the Chamber gets $15,000, the $700 for the Dunsmere Award Dinner comes out of their budget.
Oh, that's wise. That's wise.
If they're allowed to have it, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
So I favor no haircuts.
Well, since there seems to be a lot of discussion here, maybe we could go through each item and have a vote on it.
Okay. So, Councilmember Kiesler, Councilmember Brian, would you like to rescind your motion for the moment? And we'll go through this line item by line item.
Well, not really, but I mean-
Okay.
Actually, I mean-
I'm kidding, you're stuttering.
Rescind the motion. We could vote on it.
Okay. You'd like it to go to the vote. I guess.
But what I want to know is, does this encapsulate everything else? Like, amended and adopted that section of it that way? Or is it just on these?
So the motion that was, sorry, go ahead. I'm going, or, yeah, let me just summarize. So the motion on the table at this point is to amend this community promotions funding for fiscal year 2021 to allocate $10,000 to the Chamber of Commerce and $10,000 to the Community Resource Center. That is what is on the table.
What, with one caveat, that there's $1,000 where we, staff recommended bumping up the Community Resource Center. So there's actually, there's an additional $1,000 to play with.
Oh, the Chamber could get 11,000. I'm sorry. But the Chamber could get that extra 1,000, so they would get 11,000, and the Resource Center would get the 10,000.
Correct.
So would you like to amend your motion, Councilmember Kiesler?
I'm gonna amend my motion to that.
And are you okay with that, Councilmember Brian?
Real quick, could we, Dave, would you feel comfortable amending the motion? I'm fine with that. But also to include adopting all the other community resource recommendations? In other words, change those, leave everything else the same?
Okay. Here's my motion. I'll make a motion that the Chamber of Commerce gets $10,000 plus the $1,000, that the awards dinner gets nothing, because it's gonna come out of the Chamber, that the Resource Center gets their $10,000, that the Library gets $22,500, and the Park and Recreations gets nothing this year.
One second.
Discussion, discussion.
Okay. Give me one sec, Councilmember Deutsch. Wendy, I will, I am keeping all this written down, so we will compare notes after.
Her finger's probably smoking.
Yeah. Well, sometimes it's hard to follow along with everything. So Councilmember Kiesler amended his motion, and Councilmember Brian is okay with that amendment, so they are still the motion in the second on record. So I will now open- I know. I will now open this up for discussion, and I will, and I will begin with Councilmember Deutsch.
I know we're kind of dancing in this motion right here, but I just don't see the real thing we're gonna gain by giving $4,000 less to the Chamber. I don't see how that makes our city any better.
Because we only have $42,500 to play with.
Only because that's what was decided on by the Finance. We have the ability to change that.
Exactly.
Yep. Why do we want to do this? Why do we want to tell the Chamber, "Sorry, 4,000 less"? I don't understand.
So again, this is just the motion that's on the table, so you can give your discussion to justify why you would vote a certain way. The only way that we wouldn't have this motion on the table is if Councilmember Kiesler and Councilmember Brian rescind their motion. So we're just in discussion of that. So I'm going to continue to move down the line. Councilmember Brian, do you have any other discussion on the motion at hand?
Just to say that I'm supportive of the Chamber and supportive of all these organizations. The difficulty within discussion, Councilman Arth can tell you, at the Finance Committee was the, well, initially, our citizen members were in favor of a balanced budget. But then the overall community impact of what that would look like was too severe for anyone to ultimately go along with. And so, you know, by the nature of what people had received in the past and the strength of their own organizations, say with the Community Resource Center, I believe one of the rationale was, the reason they have five, they're so amazing at garnering resources. Whereas the Chamber, the reason why they were given that is new leadership. City Manager Yuhas feels that they're in a good place to modernize and become a very useful, useful institution in Dunsmere. But I guess I'd just say that $11,000 is more than we gave them last year. And Community Resource Center has only received funds one year, and they continue to be a vital resource. The Library absolutely depends on us to be open. So there's a lot of things at play here, based on the recommendations. And we were trying to also, you know, if the tax measure doesn't pass, the Finance Committee was very, very keen on offering what we can actually deliver on, you know, actually deliver upon. And we didn't want to get into a situation where, come November, if it's a no, we're looking at furloughs, at cutting various essential programs. And we've overcommitted because of our desire to support these beneficial institutions. So that's just kind of the discussions that were had and why it was reduced down to the 42.5. It just couldn't be reduced further by the general consensus there, with differing opinions. All the votes were four to one, with different, one person abstaining. So I would, you know, be in favor of Councilmember Kiesler's motion. But I do understand that $4,000 doesn't seem like a lot in the backdrop of our budget. It's just that when you take that same mentality, you can always kind of expand it, expand it. We get into a very large deficit very fast. I've been through this thought exercise a lot. And so that's why I'm personally in favor of it. But I do understand $4,000 isn't a lot in the context of our budget, so.
So just to clarify with councilmembers, I'm just editing this lovely spreadsheet so that we can at least see what's being discussed on the board, and to help Wendy out. So by no means this is the adopted budget yet. I just wanted to ensure that we had like a nice visual to see what the motion is on the floor at this point. That's, that's what we've got. Oh, and this is, I didn't just include the 1,000 additional dollars in there. So this does not equal 42.5.
I think we're seeing it.
Okay, cool. So just so that people can see that. So I'm gonna move down to Councilmember Kiesler. Do you have any other discussion before I move on to Councilmember Arth?
I want to ask one question, if I might. My question is directed to the Chairman of the Finance Committee. I know what you just said, but there's no way, let me just make sure that we're clear, there's no way that we can increase this.
Well, Dave, we can, but it's just borrowing money, essentially. You know, it's spending more than we bring in, and it makes it more likely that if we get into further trouble, that it's gonna be harder on these organizations.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's my opinion that we, we need to, you know, do the best we can with what we're given. And this is just a compromise. You know, we're, we're trying to cap it at 55. Because of COVID, you know, we've reduced it in our recommendations. That being said, I'd like to just also point out that if this does change, for better or for worse, you know, it is up to City Council to react.
We could always throw them some more bones, right? Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, if-
You know, I appreciate everything that we're doing, even when the city manager says, you know, we cut down the cemetery crew, and that we're gonna bring in, you know, we, I got that. And it's great that the sheriff's gonna bring some crews, and but then when he talks about the public, well, there's a crew of people that care about our cemetery, and we got that.
Yeah, we do. And just so you know, Big Dave, that one thing alone saves us almost $10,000.
See? See? There you go. So I am comfortable with my motion. I think that's the best. Doing that this is the money I got, that's where I'd like to spend it, and I'm hoping you all agree with me. So my motion stands.
I'm gonna move to Councilmember Arth. Would you like to discuss the motion?
I urge a no vote on the motion. We have the city budget before us. Do we have a Department of Social Services in our little town? No, we don't. We have the heroic effort of the Resource Center and its supporters. Do we have a Department of Economic Development? No, we don't. We're 100% dependent on the Chamber, at least for the next 12 months, to help us redevelop the economy in Dunsmere. So I agree with Bruce. In the context of the overall budget, it's actually sort of kicking ourselves in an unpopular place. I don't understand why we would do it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your discussion. So, so my discussion on the matter, since apparently I will most likely be the swing vote. I understand the points on both sides of the argument. My thoughts on the matter and my vote on the matter leans more towards what's going on currently in the community. And I understand the need for business support and for marketing and for all of the other great things that the Chamber of Commerce does. But I do support the motion. I feel like the Community Resource Center has been a lifeline for people just being able to survive right now. And I know that some people's survival is wrapped up in a business that they own and love and identify with. But I, I really do support the work that the Community Resource Center has been doing. Stephen Bryant has been great about communicating with us as a council on what his needs are. Stephen Bryan has been great about communicating with us as a council on what his needs are. Um, I, I think from my perspective, I want to start seeing that from the new leadership at the chamber. Um, and I understand that COVID has kind of changed how we can interact with each other, um, and meet with each other. But, um, I, I would really like to see a good faith effort from the new chamber, leadership to start reaching out to us more with updates on what's going on and what they need. Um, and knowing that $11,000 is more than what they requested in previous years, um, I think also weighs in on my decision making. Um, and I don't, I don't want it to come out as me taking money away from them. I do want to support them. And I think there is an opportunity to reevaluate this in the future as far as, you know, if they do need additional funding. Uh, I'm just, I, I'm just very, you know, I do appreciate the Finance Committee's deliberation on this. I do support staying in a, a balanced budget. That's something that we talked about doing as a goal last year that I continue to have. Um, and, you know, I think looking at, you know, from my position as being someone who also works in a government position, the, the amount of resources coming forward for businesses and chambers of commerce is, is going to be quite a bit in the next coming months. And so I would hope to hear from the Chamber of Commerce what their needs are and how we can support them in going for those dollars. Um, because we really do not have the luxury of being able to give them everything that they need at this point. Um, so I am some more supportive of the motion at hand. Um, so I'm just going to ask again before we go into a roll call vote, is there any other discussion on the motion at hand? All right.
Aye.
We'll move in, uh, we will move into a roll call vote. Um, so again, I did share my screen and Wendy has confirmed that you can see the numbers, uh, that were put into the motion.
It's not right. Madam Mayor, it's not right.
Okay, uh, what's not right about it?
It says i- if we're going, wait, wait, 11, 10. Oh, no, nope, 11, 10. You're right. That's right.
Okay.
Go ahead, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
That, that's what I have. So the motion is to approve the commu- the community promotions funding for 11,000 to the Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 2021, 10,000 for the Community Resource Center, 22,500 for the library and $0 for Park and Rec and the awards dinner. Uh, we'll move into a roll call vote. Councilmember Deutsch?
As the, uh, the, uh, Council's liaison to the chamber, I vote no.
Councilmember Bryan?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Kessler?
Aye.
Councilmember Art?
No.
And myself is an aye. Motion carries three, two. Gentlemen, thank you for the discussion and I, I always appreciate that we discussed this for the merits of what's going on. And I, I appreciate the stability that everyone brings to the table. So with that, I'm going to move us to the greater budget overall. Um, is there any other discussion on the greater budget overall?
I move we adopt the budget as presented.
I second.
Let me go to the resolution here and I will get to you, Councilmember Art, in one second. All right. So just for clarification and then I'll get to Councilmember Art. Uh, there's a motion on the table to approve Resolution 2020 dash, Wendy, 14, I believe. I'm going to assume 14, because the last one was 13. A resolution of, thank you Wendy, it is 14. Uh, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dunsmere adopting the 2020, 2022 operating budget by title only. Uh, but motion by Councilmember Deutsch, seconded by Councilmember Kessler. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to open up the motion for discussion. Councilmember Art, go ahead.
Well, eh, maybe I should leave with a question, Madam Mayor. Eh, you as Chair of the Airport Ad-Hoc Committee, do you have any kind of a timeline in mind to address the several objectives that we've been carrying for the last several years? Most significantly, formalizing the debt, including interest charges, I hope, owed by the Airport Fund and the General Fund. And then actually coming up, I mean, uh, the city manager candidly calls this asset a white elephant. And I add a white elephant wallowing in red ink. But I really think we need to make progress on the common understanding of assessing the value for the asset. Uh, its highest and best use over the next several years, how we raise the funding, whether it's a solar farm or a cannabis farm or an airport, or I don't know what. Um, I hope we do something other than just deliberate for another year.
Sure. Yeah, and we have talked about this one of our previous meetings and just keeping in touch with the city manager. One of the things that's going to tip the scales and give us a good direction on the finances for the airport is the, the two FAA grants that we've gotten have no match. So what we're able to do now is we can sell the grindings of the old airport runway. Um, I know the last time I talked to City Manager Yuhas, he had kind of put some feelers out but hadn't heard back yet, and he can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, that we would be able to hopefully either sell these for a future Caltrans project, um, which we do have a couple large scale Caltrans projects coming up in the next two to three years. Um, or if we could sell it to, uh, Suzer Ready Mix or J F Che, a different type of private company that would use them in the future. So depending on the market rate for those grindings, we could be able to alleviate the debt in the Airport Fund to the General Fund completely in the next two years. Um, that's, that's the good outlook. Uh, again, I can't provide any other information until we get a good, um, uh, the, we'd have to surplus it and then bid it out, uh, according to these projects. So we'll know more as the FAA projects continue to move forward and we're able to take a look at what the, the market value for those, uh, grindings are. Our estimates from the airport consultant, and again, City Manager Yuhas, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, put us at about $130,000 we could get for those grindings, give or take. Um, so that would be a big game changer for us at the airport in terms of financial stability. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we are looking better with the FAA now that we've got our planning documents in place. Um, and we brought this up at a, a previous meeting that we're able to leverage a lot more grant funding for those projects. And then with COVID-19 happening, um, a lot of those grants have the match, uh, removed. So hopefully with the two projects that we have going forward, we do still have to schedule a quarterly meeting. I was hoping that people were quarantining a little bit better. Um, and we were able to maybe have some in-person meetings with pilots to talk about other improvements that are needed um, to the property. Um, there are also grants opening up right now at the federal and state level through economic development that focus on aviation as well. And so those might be an additional funding source to repair some of the hangers to add value to that asset. Um, because that's kind of one of the things we're, we're up against now. It is now that we have the runway and the apron kind of figured out as far as funding and moving forward. The next thing is improving kind of the basically rundown hangers that we're renting at, at, at a pretty low cost. So I'm, I'm, my hope and ideal is to have that debt satisfied by the end of two years. Um, possibly three. Um, and the hope is after that two to three year process to also be able to push the, the fund into a positive, um, situation. I know that's a lot of up in the air stuff, but unfortunately, until we get a better sense on what we're going to get for those final grindings, um, I'm not going to be able to address that question fully. Um, as far as other, um, grant dollars, uh, the $20,000 um, that we were able to reimburse the General Fund for from the airport account is, I think, out of the ordinary. Typically with some of these other investments that we're looking at, um, it would be a slow go to pay back the General Fund. And I think Blake can also answer this as well, because I know he was taking a look at a couple of different funding mechanisms for the airport. So Blake, do you have anything else to add?
Um, not at this time. No, I think you summed it up really well, Giuliana. That was perfect.
Okay. So yeah, we're hoping for a two to three year.
On, on the, on the specific objective of executing the promissory note, I mean, that's left over from our independent audit of the 1819 budget. It seems like that's something we should be able to do in the next two or three months.
Um, yeah, Madam Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Bryan?
Um, I, I think you had a great summary of the overall position of the airport, especially as it relates to its actual ability to repay the funds, which is in many ways more than Councilman North was hoping for. Um, it was more just that, um, to, to set forth with clarity the position of those funds relative to the city and, and maybe impose a moderate, uh, interest rate. You know, something like, something that covers the inflation on that any reasonable lender would impose. Um, just so that for all of our citizens, especially as we move into these deficit years, it looks like. Um, that's just clarified and easy to see. And it's, it's essentially something our accountant has suggested we do for the last, you know, our auditor, last two years. So I don't know. I mean, I think it'd be probably pretty easy to just, you know, work with City Manager and, um, potentially even just John Kenny, we could write up something to make it official.
Okay. Yeah, I'll work with, uh, Blake and City Manager Yuhas on that outside of this overall budget discussion to get that for council review.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep. All right. Are, is there, so right now there is a motion on the table to approve Resolution 2020 dash 14. Uh, is there any other discussion on the motion at hand?
Only to say, we do have the support on the Finance Committee of both of our citizen members, Mike Delabana and Len Foreman. Uh, they improve the quality of this product substantially based on their background. And we owe them a debt as well as the chairman.
Here.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for all the work.
Thank them for their service.
Yeah, and thank you Councilmember Art and Brian for sitting on the committee as well. That's, that's a lot of work for you to do. Um, and we appreciate that.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
It really shows. And thank you to city staff as well for the support. Uh, so seeing no other discussion, I'm going to move us into a roll call vote. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Kessler?
Aye.
Councilmember Art?
Aye.
And myself is an aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. So that brings us to item number 12 on our agenda, which is future agenda items. Is there any discussion on future agenda items? Basically at this point, since we've now approved the two-year budget, um, I'll have to revisit my notes and see where we're at with the six-month priorities for the city manager and some of the other things that we've discussed at previous meetings. But is there any outstanding items that we can think about at this moment?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Art, and then first, but then Councilmember Bryan will be second.
Then me.
And then, okay, so Councilmember Art, go ahead.
My issue has to do with the oversight of the historic district and this was supposed to be agenda-worthy last year. I know I had Councilmember Kessler's support because when Big Dave was mayor in 2014, we had a joint meeting of the members of the Planning Commission and the City Council with the notion the governance of our city's historic district is important for its preservation and prosperity. And at that meeting in 2014, Ron McLeod held sway and said, what we need to do is go back to a district-type governance with a five-member committee. And all the members of the two bodies discussed it and said, yes, that's what we need to do. And it never happened. There was never the appointment of five members. It was a period where the city manager informed us that it was go easy on any code violations, even including empty and vacant buildings. So my request is that you and the city manager sometime after we get through the worst of the COVID, set up a Zoom meeting with the members of the Planning Commission and us, and certainly our city planner, to go through the different models and they go from doing absolutely nothing, the status quo, to two members of the Planning Commission being the eyes and ears and oversight, which hasn't worked. I don't even know if the Planning Commission has two members, to actually doing what I've talked with Todd about a little bit, treating it as a district, a taxable district. And this sort of plays into the role of the chamber and the role of whoever oversees our historic district. There are ways to go after grants and get money. But as we move into enforcement of our new empty and vacant building ordinance, in 2014, Mark Juarez said, "I wish the city would talk to me. I want to talk to the city about the buildings I own and the issues." I'd like to see that start with the Planning Commission rather than going immediately to heavy enforcement action, at least give it a try. So that is what I hope we get on our agenda sooner rather than later. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have a note. All right, uh, Councilmember Bryan?
Uh, two, two things real quick. Um, one is, uh, it came to our attention that, um, when we appointed the two citizen members to the Finance Committee, um, one would serve a two-year term, one would serve a one-year, so that there'd be alternation. And, um, that's going to be coming up on July 18th. Uh, we'll be noticing it shortly, so either at the next, or probably two meetings from now, uh, we'll need to appoint, um, someone to the Finance Committee meeting. Uh, Mike Delabana is the, um, member whose term expires. He would like to continue to serve, but it'll be opened up.
Make a motion. Oh, I guess you can't.
No. Okay. So, uh, yeah, we'll probably have Wendy advertise that in the paper because it is a Brown Act and it does have to go through.
I also wanted to announce to people that it'll be available at City Hall if you're interested in serving.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And then more importantly, um, I've heard a lot about this over the year plus I've been on council. And I, I don't know if it's really been the time, um, to discuss it yet. But, um, Dunsmere City, uh, by referendum passed a tax on marijuana. And it gave caps that were very high and then a preset rate. But City Council was allowed to fluctuate anywhere from, you know, anywhere up to that cap. Um, and I've, I've heard different things. I was just wondering if, before we get fully rolling, um, with business here in Dunsmere, uh, perhaps council could revisit those tax rates and where they compare with the market. And, um, you know, because if I hear things, say, from members of the public constituents that, oh, they're, they're, they're set too low, they're set too high. I would just like to have a better understanding of, um, where we as a council set them.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilmember Kessler.
I have to concur with you, Matthew, and thank you for bringing that up. It's been brought to my attention that the city of Mount Shasta charges 30% or 30 cents for tax on every dry ounce. And the city of Dunsmere is charging $3. That's 100%. So, um.
Attention as well, but then I, upon further research, some cities charge more than us. So that's where, uh, you know, I, I would say City Manager perhaps prepare a report on it. But, um, our mayor might be the most qualified to, um, explain the situation to us.
Well, I just thought it out there. I was hoping that she was going to speak. Come on.
Uh, yeah, we can agendize that. Let, let's agendize that because that could go on for a very long time.
Okay.
Cool. Um, all right. Councilmember Deutsch, I believe you also had a future agenda.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think that we should, uh, take up Devin Warner's, um, challenge and have on the agenda wearing of masks so that we can all together make it clear as a council how we look at that and hopefully save some lives.
How do you, uh, see that panning out? Do you, are you looking for a resolution? Are you looking for a city ordinance? Are you looking for, uh, presentation?
I'm, I'm, I guess I would say, uh, well, I, I guess I don't know. Um, I'm not sure what we have the ability to do. That's the problem.
Looking for a resolution, Bruce.
Okay, a resolution then.
Well, why not, uh, I'll talk to City Manager Yuhas on this item and get back to the council via email and then we can discuss, uh, we can see if we want that on a future agenda item then.
But I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how to do it. I'm open to suggestions, but I know that as a council, we should do this and that's, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other future agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move in. Seeing none, we'll move into item number 13, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, let's stay here a while.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Councilmember Keisler has motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a safe Fourth of July, everybody.
Yes, thank you. All those in favor of journeying, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, no nays or abstentions. So we are adjourned for tonight. Again, thank you, gentlemen, so much for the lovely discussion. And congratulations to the Finance Committee and city staff for a two-year fiscal budget. And everyone have a very safe, independent day.
Good night, everybody.
Good evening.